Okay, we're getting ready to start, but we're gonna have Mike give us some mic instructions.
So Kerry Bowling and I have set up the sound system and many of you know that this isn't the usual place where the Palmer City Council has its meetings. So it takes a bit to get things set up. I'll just give you some hints about the mic use, both for the council and anyone who wants to speak later on. We have four, count them, four wireless mics. We place them strategically so they're to be shared. You two are sharing that one. Each one of these wireless mics has a little button there. If you press it long enough, it'll turn green. Now, if you leave them all on, we can control some of the sound back there, but if you're just passing it to someone, then you can leave it on, or you can just hold that button for about three seconds. That's as long as it takes to make that happen. So the same thing is true here. There'll be one mic here, there's one to be shared here, the mayor has one, and there's one to be shared there. So you'll have to share, which means that when you're finished speaking, please just hand it to whomever is going to be next, if that's in your area. But the same thing up here, when you come up to be audience participation, one of the wireless mics will be up here, and you'll be able to use that as you come up. And just leave it on once it's turned on for the first person, and subsequent people can use it that way, and I think it'll work well. But because this is a streamed video and audio, unless you're speaking into the mic, you're not going to be heard very well either here or out there in the world. Thank you.
All right, and I should also mention, there's bathrooms in the back that way. There's an exit here, and there's an exit you probably came in. All right, we will call this meeting to order. What time is it? 6:02 PM for the Palmer City Council meeting for April 22nd, 2025. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please? Here. Okay. All right, so next we have Pledge of Allegiance. If I could ask everyone to stand and why it, if you could lead us in the pledge. Next is approval of the agenda. What's the wishes of the council?
Move to approve.
Yeah, I don't know. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please? Oh.
Yes.
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 Okay, next is communications appearance requests. And we've got a proclamation. I think I've got a pastor or two and a chaplain, maybe, if they want to come forward. We're doing a proclamation for the day of prayer coming up. So... It's always nicer to be able to hand a proclamation to somebody, so. So proclaiming May 1st, 2025 is the 74th National Day of Prayer. Whereas the 74th observance of the National Day of Prayer will be held on Thursday, May 1st, 2025, with the theme "Pour out the God of hope and be filled." "Now may the God of hope fill you with all joy and peace in believing, so that you abound in hope by the power of the Holy Spirit." Romans 15:13. "Whereas a national day of prayer has been part of our national heritage since it was declared by the First Continental Congress in 1775, and the United States Congress in 1952 approved as a joint resolution that the President shall set aside and proclaim a suitable day each year other than Sunday as a national day of prayer, on which the people of the United States may turn to God in prayer and meditation in churches, in groups, and as individuals." "And whereas the United States Congress in 1988 by Public Law 100-307 has amended establishes an act to provide for setting aside the first Thursday in May as the date on which the National Day of Prayer is celebrated." "Whereas leaders and citizens of our communities, cities, states, and nation are afforded the privilege of prayer with the joy of seeking divine guidance, strength, protection, and comfort from Almighty God. And whereas recognizing the love of God, we citizens of Palmer treasure the freedom to gather in prayer, exercising reliance on God's power in the face of present challenges and threats, asking for His blessing on every individual of our city." "Now therefore it's proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Palmer, Alaska, does hereby recognize May 1st, 2025 as a national day of prayer in Palmer, and encourages citizens to unite in prayer for our nation, state, and city, to give thanks for the many blessings of our country has received, and to recognize our need for personal and corporate renewal of moral values for April 22nd, April 2025."
Yeah. My name is Scott Phillips and live here in the community and have the privilege of pastoring one of our local churches. But we have organized, we're gonna actually hold an event right here in this location at 12 noon on Thursday, May the 1st. So if you're a praying person, we'd love to have you join in and join us in prayer as we seek the Lord's best for our community. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Sean Crowe, the chaplain, the full-time support for the National Guard around the state of Alaska. I actually lived a little further towards Wasilla, but I always traveled through Palmer, and we support all the communities. Glad to be friends of Palmer and support the churches, a member of the prayer network here. And we're looking forward to celebrating how important prayer is, how important it is now more than ever. Thank you.
Now we've got, where's our fire chief? He's looking with a blank look on his face, yeah. I believe we have some recognition, some promotions. So Chief, if you wanna bring your troops up. Kerry. It's on.
Tonight you all get to witness Palmer Fire and Rescue's recently promoted officers take the oath of office. While these individuals have taken this oath before, when they receive their initial badges, tonight is different. This evening, they renew their commitment to the oath they first swore, pledging to uphold the public trust that has been so generously entrusted to us by our community. As they stand before us receiving their new badges, remember that these badges carry more weight than the ones they wore before. With these new badges comes new responsibilities, greater leadership, and the continued duty to serve with the highest level of integrity and excellence. Barney, Colt, Matt, Crystal, this ceremony is not just a formal occasion, but a reminder of the duty you have taken on. Let this be a moment to reflect on your commitment to serving the public, being ready at all times, and pursuing excellence in all that you do. The weight of the badge you wear and the helmet you carry should remind you that you are part of something bigger than yourselves, an unwavering team committed to the safety and well-being of our community. You are empowered with the important task of leading and mentoring those who will follow in your footsteps. It is a responsibility that requires continuous growth and constant vigilance. And as you lead, always remember to share your knowledge with those who will one day take your place. It is with great honor and pride that I stand before you tonight, reaffirming our commitment and swearing in these awesome individuals as they take on their new roles with our department. I. Do solemnly swear. That I will. Support the department's mission statement. Follow the department's core values. And faithfully and impartially. Carry out my duties. As. For Palmer Fire and Rescue. Under the appointment of the fire chief. According to the laws. Policies and procedures. Established by the city of Palmer. The state of Alaska. And the United States of America. To the best of my skills and abilities. As you continue this journey, every time you pin on your badge, remember the trust it represents and the higher code of conduct we collectively must uphold. I hope the tradition of public trust afforded to us will never be extinguished. Remember your badge serves as a symbol to yourself and others of your commitment to serve our community and uphold that public trust.
And we'll take a little break so we can congratulate some people. Next, I think Carla is here, and I think she wants to introduce some people, some young ambassadors, shall we say. Whichever.
And you guys, we're gonna just line up all the way here. But we're gonna look this way. And then maybe we'll step back a little bit. You guys wanna step back a little bit? Good? Okay. Konbanwa, minasan. Good evening, Mayor Carrington and city council. We are really honored to be here today. And I know some of them are maybe doki doki, doki doki, a little nervous. But this is their chance to introduce themselves to you before they go and represent the city of Palmer and Palmer High School and Palmer Junior Middle School abroad. And they have been working on their introductions, both in English and Japanese. So you're gonna hear a little bit of their Japanese tonight. 2025 is a big year for the city of Palmer. It is our 45th anniversary of our sister-city relationship. And as you know, we were gonna be sending a big adult delegation in 2020, and then life happened. So it was postponed. It's 2025, and so we're gonna have a huge delegation this year, both with the city and the students. And I just wanna let the city council know as well, we have a spot or two if any of you wanna attend. And that's for the adult delegation in July. We go over every five years, the city, we host, we'll host, actually, we will host the 50th. So Saroma's hosting the 45th, we'll host the 50th, and then it'll go back to the 55 in Saroma. So just dropping that in your hat. So, but today it's about our student delegation. They will be leaving June 1st. Will fly, now that Alaska Airlines goes through Hawaii, will go through Hawaii, make it to Haneda, and then they'll get to see the, one of the biggest cities, Tokyo, for two days, and then fly up to Saroma to see Hokkaido, and they will stay with host families, go to school, use their Japanese, and learn about city life, or the government at the Yakuba, and both the scallops, the scallop industry, the farming. So it will be, it was, I got the chance to do this when I was their age. I was 17 years old, and thank goodness I listened to the announcements that morning, and I got to travel over for three weeks with Mayor George Carte and his wife. And that, I will say, was the number one thing that had most influence in my entire life. And that, I would say, was the experience that really connected me to the city of Palmer. I always felt like a part of, I grew up in the Butte, I always felt a part of every school that I attended, from Swanson to Sheridan, the Butte, Palmer Junior Middle and Palmer High, and then the church that I attended. But it was this program that really connected me to the city of Palmer. So I really wanna thank you for supporting this program, and I think it is really a gem, a true gift that we have. So without further ado.
Konbanwa, minasan. Hajimemashite. Boku wa Aiden desu. Jyunanasei de, Pama koko no sanrensei desu. Nihonii ikunega tanoshimi, tanoshimi desu. Shumi wa, hikingu osurukoto to gi- gameu osurukoto to tomodachi to osobukoto desu. Hello, everyone. My name's Aiden. I am 17 and a junior at Palmer High School. I'm really excited to be going to Japan this year. My hobbies are gaming, hiking, and hanging out with friends. Soste Saroma de kabocha no okashi o tabete mitai desu. Yume desune. Gakko de reki shi to eigo no jujio wo mite mitai desu. Sos- sorekara dekireba, hosto kazoku to isshoni sakana turi wo shita desu. Dozo yoroshiku onegaishimasu. In Japan, I would like to try the Saroma's pumpkin snacks. I hear they're very famous. In, at Saroma School, I would like to see the history class and English class. And with my host family, if possible, I would love to go fishing. Thank you all for listening to me.
Hajimemashite. Watashi no namae wa Ayah desu. Arasuka no Pama shi kara kimashta. Watashi wa juni saide chigoku no ichi rensei desu. Shumi wa utau koto to suki o suru koto to e wo kakuko desu. Saroma cho de otoro mitai desu. Gakko de yoga no jujio ni iki tai desu. Hozoku zoku to issho ni bodogemo uste oishimo no tabet mitai desu. Dozo yoroshiku onegaishimasu.
Good evening and nice to meet you. My name is Ayah Ba-Baev, and I'm from Palmer, Alaska. I'm in sixth grade, I'm a sixth grade student at PJMS. My hobbies are singing, skiing, and drawing. In Saroma, I want to go to a temple. At school, I want to go to a choir class and a cooking class. With my host family, I would love to play board games and try new food. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. Dozo yoroshiku onegaishimasu.
Konbanwa, minasan. Hajimemashite. Watashi no namae wa Tetsya Alkantra desu. Arasuka no Pama shi kara kimashta. Jyunanasei de, Pama koko no sanrensei desu. Shumi wa dokushou to, violin o ensu suru koto to onaku o kiku koto desu.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to meet you. My name is Tetsya Alkantra, and I am from Palmer, Alaska. I am 17 years old, and I am from Pa- huh, I go to Palmer High? My hobbies are reading, listening to music, and playing the violin. Saroma, Saroma cho de, Saroma ko ni iki tai desu. Gakko de bijutsu to yori no jujio wo sakai shita desu. Dekireba, hosto kazoku to isshoni watashi wa ninkin na resu to ran de iki tai desu. Dozo yoroshiku onegaishimasu. In Saroma, in Saroma.
I would like to go to Saroma Lake. At school, I wanna participate in art and cooking class. If possible, with my host family, I would like to go to a popular restaurant.
Thank you for listening.
Konbanwa, minisan. Hajimemashite. Watashi no nemi wa Annaba Rocky desu. Arakasa no Pama kara kimi shaa kimi shaa mostia. Watashi no shumi wa sakka to oikoto ko to kaimanu mono o shoku to desu.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Annaba Rocky. I'm from Palmer Junior Middle School. I'm 11 years old. And my hobbies are soccer, swimming, and shopping. Saroma cho de sakka o shitaite. Ice creamu o tabete mito desu. Gakko eigo no jujio ni sakai shita desu. Dekereba, hosto kazoku to isshoni onbi ni iki tai board gameu o shita desu. Dozo yoko o game shismus.
With my host family, I would like to go to the beach and go shopping with them. I want to play board games with them. And at school, I want to attend PE and English classes, and yeah. May our relationship be prosperous.
Konbanwa, minasan. Hajimemashite. Boku no namae wa Wyatt Goduski desu. Arasuka no Pama shi kara kimashta. Watashi wa jyunanasei de, Pama koko no yonrensei desu. Good afternoon, everyone. Nice to meet you. My name is Wyatt Goduski. I come from Palmer, Alaska. I'm 18 years old and a senior at Palmer High. Shumi wa terbi gameu osurukoto to hikingu osurukoto to onaku o kiku koto desu. Saroma cho de Horoiwa yama ni nobataru machi no mawari itari mitai desu. Gakko de reki shi to yori no jujio ni sakai shita desu. Soshte, hosto no kazoku isshoni mainichi no sekatsu wo takken shita desu. Nande mo arigatai desu. My hobbies are playing games, hiking, and listening to music. In Saroma, I would like to climb Mount Horoiwa and just see the overall area. In school, I would like to participate in history and a cooking class. And with my family, I would just like to see everyday life. I'd just be appreciative for anything. And I would like to give a big thank you to the city of Palmer for supporting this program.
Konbanwa, mi- misana. Hajimemashite. Watashi no namae wa Riji Parsons desu. Arasuka no Pama shi kara kima washta. Watashi wa Pama chugaku no sensei desu. Eigo du shakai o oshite imasu. Shumi wa yoga to, tokushu to, kazoku to, tomodashi to, sugosoku to desu. Hello, my name is Lizzie Parsons. I am a sixth grade language arts and social studies teacher at Palmer Junior Middle School. I am 33 year old, 33 years old, and I am, my hobbies include yoga, reading, and being with the ones that I love. And I'm from Palmer, Alaska. I was born and raised in Palmer and went K-12 through Swanson, all the way through Palmer High. And it's really special to be part of this program as a chaperone. I was in middle school when her middle school was added to the sister-school exchange. Shumi wa, oh, sorry, I said that already. Tekiri ba Saroma no otero o homoshita desu. Gakko de Saroma no sensei kachi no no ichi nichi no sekatsu o mita mitai desu. Hozoku kazoku to isshoni kodomo no hon o manapitai desu. When I'm in Saroma, I would love to visit their temples at the school. I would love to experience the day in the life of a teacher there. And I would love to learn with my host family the stories that they tell their children. I really appreciate your guys' support and your time, and everybody else who's behind us, for allowing us this space and this opportunity to represent and continue the relationship with Saroma.
Konbanwa, minasan. Hajimemashite. Watashi no namae wa Preston Ogden desu. Arasuka no Pama shi kara kimashta. Jyunanasei de, Pama koko no sanrensei desu. Shumi wa terbi gameu osurukoto to snowboard ni noru koto to onaku o kiku koto desu. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to meet you. My name is Preston Ogden, and I come from the city of Palmer, Alaska. Anyways. Anyways, I am 16 and I am a junior at Palmer High School. And my hobbies are playing video games, snowboarding, and listening to many different types of music. Saroma cho de keski no tamani Saroma no yama ni hikingu shita desu. Gakko de onaku no ki- no jujio ni sakai shita desu. Saegon ni hosto no kazoku to isshoni Nihon no ensen o mitai desu. Dozo yoroshiku onegaishimasu. Meaning, in town Saroma, I would like to hike one of their famous mountains for the view. In the schools of Saroma, I would like to see and possibly participate in one of their music classes. And with my host family, I would like to see one of the Japanese hot springs. May our relationship be prosperous, and again, thank you to the city for supporting this program throughout all its years.
Konbanwa, minasan. Hajimemashite.
Hajimemashite. Wata-
Hajimemashite.
Wataishino Namai wa Nora Park desu. Alaska no Palma Shi kara kimashta. Wataishwa Junisai de Palma Chuka ko no Ningse desu. Shumi wa Eo Kuku to To Dosu to Sakka o Suru Koto Desu. Um, good evening, nice to meet you. Um, my name is Nora Park. I am a seventh grader at PJMS. Um, uh, my hobbies are drawing, reading, and playing soccer. Saroma Chode Kankou o Shite Desu. Gakko de Bi Jutsu no Jujio o Mitaides. Hozoku Zoku To Isso Ni Yori o Shite Desu. Dozo Yoroshiku Onigashimasu. In Saroma, I would love to go sightseeing and just kind of look around. Um, at the school, I would love to see the art class and with my host family, I would love to just be able to cook with them and try different foods. Thank you so much.
Konbanwa, Minasan. Hajimemashite.
Hajimemashite.
Wataishino Namai wa Giselle Montague desu. Alaska no Palma Shi kara kimashta. Jounana Saide Palma Koko no Sanen Se desu. Shumi wa Harp to Cello to Piano o Hiku to Desu. Ongaku wa Daishi Desu. Um, good evening, everyone. It is nice to meet you. My name is Giselle Montague. I am from Palmer, Alaska. I am seventeen years old and a junior at Palmer High School. Uh, my hobbies include playing harp, cello, and piano. I love music overall and I hope with this exchange program that I can learn more about the music of Japan. Saroma Chon no Michi no Eki de Saroma no Yumei na Kabochan no Ice Creamu o Tabetai Mitaides. Soshite MoMo Chan Ni Mo Ai Shite Desu. Sorekara Saroma Koko no Katteka to Ongaku to Kukou no Jujio ni Sanka Shite Desu. Dekireba, Hozoku Kazoku To Isso Ni Nihon no Desato o Skute Mitaides. Takusan no Omoe Te o Skuritais. Dozo Yoroshiku Onigashimasu. In Saroma, they have this really popular train station, Michi no Eki, and they have lots of little shops. Um, for me, I really want to try their famous pumpkin ice cream because Saroma is known for their pumpkins, among other things, but... Speaking of pumpkins, Saroma has this really cool mascot and it's this giant pumpkin named Momo and I really would love to see him in Saroma. At Saroma High School, I want to see their homec music class and Japanese class because I love all things Japanese. If possible, with my host family, I would love to see some uh Japanese desserts being made, hopefully participate in the making because I love baking and I'd love to expand my horizons to Japan. Um, nice to meet you. May our relationship be prosperous and yet again, a big, big thank you for supporting this exchange program.
Konbanwa, Minasan.
Konbanwa.
Hajimemashite.
Hajimemashite.
Wataishino Namai wa William desu. Sorry, everyone. Uh, Alaska no Palma Shi kara kimashta. Demo Akachan no Toki Nihon no Misawa Shi ni Sande Imasta. Wataishwa Juyon Sai de Palma Chuka ko no Sanen Se desu. Shumi wa Hikingu o Suru Koto to Karashi o Suru Koto to Karasu Kan Tori Running, Running, Running Gu Desu. Uh, uh, sorry. Good evening, everyone. My name is William Cannon. Uh, I am fourteen years old and I am a student at Palmer Junior Middle School. Um, my hobbies are art, sports, and spending time with my loved ones. Uh, I have always felt connected to Japan because I was um born in Misawa, Japan and yes, that is a fact about me. Saroma Chode Suta no Puru de Oyogitaides. Saroma no Bunka to Rekishi mo Manapitai Omatsuri Ga Attara Mitaides. Gakko de Bi Jutsu to Taikuto Gashon no Jujio ni Iki Tais. Hoz- Hoz- Hozoku Kazoku To Isso Ni Na Nihon no Barori o Tabi- Tabete Mitaides. Takara Be Sakana Sumi o Shita- Shitaides. Soto no Katoro Ga Daishi Desu. In Saroma, I would like to um try varieties of Japanese food and would like to participate in art, PE, and... Um, and history classes. Uh, I would like to uh just live the day and life of everybody in Japan. Uh, hopefully, I would connect with uh everyone and hope to belong there as I felt as a baby. Dozo Yoroshiku Onigashimasu.
Konbanwa, Minasan. Hajimemashite. Wataishino Namai wa Krista Mayfield desu. Hmm, Alaska no Palma Ki- Shi kara kimashta. Uh, Wataishwa Sanju San Sai de Palma Koko no Sensei desu. Shumi wa Ongaku to Terbi to Jannaringu. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us today. It's wonderful to meet you. My name is Krista Mayfield. I am uh thirty-three years old and I also work at Palmer High School. Um, Ms. Parsons and I went to Palmer High and Palmer Junior Middle School together. We are grateful that uh after, like she said, the first year it was introduced was when we entered Palmer Middle School, for the middle school. Um, we missed the opportunity then. We didn't get to go when we were in high school either. And uh here we are, decades later, we finally get to have our opportunity uh to take our students to Saroma. So we're very grateful to be involved here. In Saro- oh, no, in Japanese. Saroma Chode Ah Shisen o Mitaides. Gakko de Sugaku to Ongaku no Jujio ni Sanka Shite Desu. Hozoku Kazoku To Isso Ni Iru Iru na Tabemono o Tabete Mitaides. Dozo Yoroshiku Onigashimasu. While I'm visiting Saroma, I would like to see the nature and how it compares to Palmer, uh Alaska here. Um, at the school, I have to experience a music class and a math class. Like to see how they do things there. Um, while living with my host family, I'm a big foodie, so I'm gonna try a variety of different foods. Um, we would love to thank you guys all for being here. Thank you for listening, uh to our audience, to our council members. Uh, thank you for supporting us. We look forward to bringing back a ton of photos and fun experiences to share with you when we return at the end of June. Thank you.
Yeah, let's take a break so we can do a photo.
Do you want this? You have two. I don't know. Well, you can have three. You can have three.
So uh, next we have oath of office. I think it was last month we had a council member, Best, resigned. And then we took in applications and then uh I asked extra questions and so we had seven applicants with lots of questions answered. And that's actually all in the packet because there's some interesting, good ideas that we should be looking at. But I selected uh Ken Erby, who's served on the council for twelve years before. So Madam Clerk, how are we doing this? Okay, do you want an extra mic? Okay.
I, Ken Erby. Do solemnly swear. To defend and support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
And the ordinance of the city of Palmer.
And the ordinance of the city of Palmer.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
Honestly, impartially, and faithfully.
Discharge my duties and obligations.
Discharge my duties and obligations.
As a council member of the city of Palmer.
As a council member of the city of Palmer.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, next is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I have um, I don't have a written report for tonight, but I do have three things that um we'll bring up verbally here. First of them, first of all, I'd like to recognize uh the Finance Department, member of the Finance Department. Uh, the city of Palmer, full-time employees or members of the State of Alaska Retirement System, known as PERS. As part of the sys- the city's bi-weekly payroll process, PERS contributions from employees and the city are uploaded to the Division of Retirements and Benefits e-Reporting System. On November fourth, twenty twenty-four, the State Office of Information Technology detected an intrusion in the main servers, thus leading to a shutdown of the PERS reporting systems. At that time, the state decided to upgrade their processes and migrate all programs to the state's cloud. The e-Reporting system that the city and most municipalities use to report PERS contributions needed extensive updates and code rewriting to be compatible with this cloud. This resulted in the e-Reporting system being down from November fourth through the end of February twenty twenty-five. That's nearly four full months. This left the city with a backlog of PERS contributions and reporting for eight different payrolls. Once the e-Reporting system was available to use at the end of February, the state put a deadline on getting caught up with PERS contributions and reporting by the end of April twenty twenty-five. Finance employee Kim Kelly, the AP, uh the accounts payable and payroll technician, was very diligent and tenacious about getting caught up with the city's PERS contributions and reporting. She arrived at work early, entered without errors a prior bi-weekly PERS contribution and report, and did uh did all the calculations, got the finance director's sign-off. And this is all for seventy-seven to eighty different um city employees. She waited for PERS approval before she could enter each payroll. Uh, this was Kim's routine for all of March and April, along with all the other standard duties that that she does. Uh, so everybody knows, we do a, we do a back and forth. One week is accounts payable and the next week is payroll. And each of those weeks is a full week of of work. And so all this that she's doing is is on top of the normal duties that she does. Kim was able to enter the PERS contributions and reports for the eight backlog payrolls, March payrolls and the first payroll in April by April eighth. She did all of this in basically a little over four weeks. So, and it's well ahead of the state deadline of April thirtieth. So a a big thank you to to Kim Kelly in our in our finance department tonight. Uh, the second order of business that I have for you tonight is uh in accordance with uh the Palmer Municipal Code uh two oh two dot oh eight zero paragraph B. I'm requesting a special meeting of the city council to be held in council chambers at six PM on Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. That's uh one week from tonight. The topic of this meeting is going to be the Palmer Library. A requested agenda and legislative items will be submitted later for later this week. There will be legislation at this meeting. Um, and written notice has been provided to the city clerk earlier today. And final order of business, I just want to say thank you to the the members of council for um for everything, for trusting me to to be able to sit in this seat and and do this job. And uh for those of you don't know, uh this is my last meeting as interim city manager. So thank you and and members of the community. Thank you very much for your support.
All right, uh does the council have any com- questions for the manager from his report? Okay. Oh, Councilmember Hudson.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I was trying to get the microphone on fast enough. Um, so I do have a quick question for the city manager. Um, this meeting um it will be brought forward um after um the new city manager comes in. Is that correct?
That's correct. The new city manager will sit as the city manager at that meeting.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Uh, yes, continue.
Okay, uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so well, so you're bringing forth a meeting with legislation for the new city manager to take over that meeting? Uh, could it wait for her to bring forward when she's in the position?
It can. Uh, the purpose of this meeting is um our uh our community development director, Brad Hanson, is retiring May first. So he's been basically the um he's been in charge and responsible for the the development of the library, for for the funding of it, for the the insurance settlement of it. And this is the opportunity for the new manager, for council, to sit down with with Brad at that meeting and to be able to turn the information over to you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Hudson.
Yes, thank you. If this is an informational meeting, then my question would be um what legislation is going to be brought forward for the council to vote on? And would the um if this project um or whatever was going to be voted on, um if it was of an agreement in importance to the city, to the council, and to the position, and everything was correct and proper, then wouldn't the new community development director and the new city manager want to bring forth the same legislation um once they're in their positions?
Mr. Manager.
If that's the wishes of council, then um that can be decided next Tuesday night. There there's going to be multiple pieces of legislation that will come forward. And I'm just, we're still developing the legislation and I'm not prepared to discuss it tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Alkantra.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, John Demany, for your work the last several months, but uh I would have saved this for council comments, but I didn't think uh being gone on the fifth Tuesday of the month was gonna be an issue. But I will not be here on uh April twenty-ninth. I'll be out of state. So uh I uh wish it couldn't, wish it could have waited till a regular city council meeting. Uh, but uh if uh Mr. Hanson's retiring on the first, I I think you guys in my absence will get uh possibly some valuable information. So uh I would say uh carry on and uh and do good work. But I I do agree with my fellow council member to my right that uh bringing it up on the second day of a new city manager just taking home, I mean, that's uh drinking from the fire hydrant pretty much and uh coming in and having to deal with it uh right away. So that's all I got. Thank you.
All right. Any other council members? Uh, next is the mayor's report. I have, I submitted a written report and like, as I mentioned, uh with that report was all the different applications for, submitted for uh for fulfilling the seat for the council. So it it does make for some interesting reading. There was a lot of interesting ideas in there. Uh, is there any questions from the council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alkantra.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, on to the uh kind of Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, on to the, uh, uh, kind of embarrassment at riches that we had, which is a beautiful thing, by the way. They have, uh, seven, uh, citizens of Palmer willing to step up and, uh, serve for six months. Um, I, uh, you know, this was a mayoral appointment, obviously not a city council appointment. And so, he had to make a decision amongst a lot of high-quality candidates for, uh, for this position. And, uh, he made his decision to Mr. Herbie, and I welcomed Mr. Herbie to the council, back to the council, I should say, after he's served, uh, a dozen years, uh, previously. Um, but I do want to reiterate what the mayor said about there's tremendous amount of information from these other six folks that, uh, put themselves forward. Um, they answered some pretty tough questions, and they, they did so very well. And, uh, it's certainly something that's, uh, worth going back to and reading their responses that they, that they submitted. So, uh, uh, even as we move forward, there's a lot to learn from these other six individuals that, uh, that put their name forward as well. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions for me? Um, okay. City clerk, Madam Clerk? There's a written report? Is there any questions for the clerk? Oh, they couldn't hear you. Um, Councilmember Hudson?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I did have a question, uh, for the clerk. Uh, I'm under the impression that you, uh, certify the ballots for the upcoming election. I was just, um, wondering if, um, the response statement, um, on the ballot, um, for the recall, if that went through any, um, any legal, if there was anybody that, uh, looked over that before it was put out to the public?
Nope, that did not happen. It goes right from the person to the ballot according to the Alaska statutes.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, um, well, I, my question is, um, well, my statement regarding the situation is, is that I think it's strange that the first part of this ballot has to be approved by an attorney so that the city cannot behold, held liable for things that are put on there. But then the second half, anybody can just say whatever they want, and we can just hope that there's not going to be any liability on the city. And I can understand, considering names that were mentioned, that maybe it wouldn't go to our city attorney, um, but possibly to talk to her, to have another attorney review it, um, I think just would have been important. So, um, I guess I can be, bringing legislation forward on that, um, to protect the city in the future. I just think that that's really important. Um, so, thank you very much.
Uh, Madam Clerk?
The statement from the petitioners is not approved by an attorney. It's just reviewed for if it falls into the, under the Alaska statutes. It's not approved. No words are exchanged. It's the same thing.
Got to point the mic.
Okay, sorry. So, it's approv- it's not approved by an attorney. Neither statement is. So, just to clarify that.
All right. Um, Councilmember Alcantra?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I was gonna kind of let this one slide by, but, uh, one of the things that I, I found, I, I, I think what I heard the city clerk say is that it's not, it doesn't matter what's put in the statement, uh, by the other party, it can just, it can just go out there, no matter what is. And one of the things that I found problematic, just from a professionalism standpoint, as you mentioned, one of our, uh, council members by her first name, and you mentioned other council members by their last name, I just found it, uh, uh, unprofessional if nothing else. And if there's no, if there's nobody to review that for, you know, grammatical errors, for those kind of things, then I guess there's nobody to review it. But, uh, kind of along the lounds of my fellow council member, I'm, uh, a little stunned that, uh, it just goes through without, uh, anybody, you know, looking for Ts to be, uh, crossed and Is to be dotted. Because I would never, uh, in a professional document, call my fellow council member, uh, by her first name. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes, thank you. I also was wondering if it was an option for the people that were, uh, submitting the recall application to have emboldened font on the ballot statement, and, um, if not, why it was available to the person that was giving the response on their ballot rebuttal?
So, the person who responded, uh, responded by email. The person who responded responded by email. And the words, all I do is count the words. It has to be under 200 words. The same thing happens for the people who submit it in writing for the, uh, application. It's the same process.
Okay, Councilmember Hudson, follow up?
Yes, so it says on the recall application, when somebody's submitting it, that they can choose to italicize or bold font, or change font of different wording, of different parts of their statement that they're giving?
It's submitted how it's submitted to me, and I don't change or touch anything from either side.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and I had, uh, emailed, uh, your office and, and the city clerk's office, uh, about that, because my, my concern really was just that we had a private citizen's name listed, uh, on that ballot in the response section. And I, I know for me, when we were going through training, it was, uh, heavily talked about that we need to make sure we refer people by job title, because it's become something that goes in front of the public, and essentially a historical record, essentially. And so, I was concerned about city liability with having, um, you know, someone's name out there that isn't an elected official listed on the ballot in, in a disparaging manner. So, um, that's still my concern. So, hopefully, nothing comes of that, but I just wanted to, uh, make that clear. Thank you.
All right, uh, city attorney's report. Madam Attorney?
Good evening. I'll be brief this evening. Um, I just wanted everyone to know that the signed city manager contract is action memo- memorandum number 25040. This was crafted, um, by myself in conjunction with the HR company, um, and the negotiations committee who operated under the direction of the council. The final signed draft is on page 98 through 102 in your agenda packet. And that's it for me this evening.
Okay. Is there any questions for the attorney from the council? All right. Uh, next we have audience participation. Uh, please sign in, state your name, and three minutes per person. Council meeting rules, protect your right to testify and ensure that all those attending can express their views if they do not interfere with the rights of others to see and hear the proceedings. At all times, order and decorum will be maintained in keeping with the civility and dignity of the legislative process. Uh, no disruptions to city business or threats of any kind will be allowed. Individuals who cannot follow these guidelines will be removed, and any threats against others could result in criminal prosecution. All right, so we're opening audience participation. Yeah, after Mike gets the mic set up, or you, wh- while you're working on the mic. Okay. All right. Uh, Keith Barkwood is first.
All right. Well, hello, and, uh, thank you for allowing me the time before you. I am Keith Barkwood. And as your School Resource Officer for the City of Palmer Schools, my focus every day is on making a positive impact on the lives of our kids. Funny enough, though, I used to cringe when adults would ask me that classic, "What do you want to be when you grow up?" Now, it's a question I ask students regularly as part of my duties. Growing up in the suburbs just outside of New York City, we had this saying, "Forget about it. I know a guy." Uh, it usually referred to some relative who is a whiz at fixing just about anything. And you know how it goes. "Oh, I dropped my bike and busted the whatchamacallit. Uh, forget about it. I know a guy, my cousin Tony. He can fix anything with wheels." Um, it wasn't until I started working with students that, uh, exploring different career paths that I truly grasped the power of that phrase. Take Tyler Redman, a senior at Palmer High School. He's setting his sights high. He's applying to be a warrant officer, flight training program in the Army. Uh, to help prepare him for his military flight aptitude test, he signed up to be my teacher's assistant for a couple of periods this year. Um, now, I can usually hold my own in a conversation on a lot of subjects, but helicopter flight dynamics, that is not in my wheelhouse. Uh, that's when I had a real "forget about it" moment. I found out that John D'Mente is a helicopter pilot and a Marine Corps officer nonetheless, Semper Fi, sir. I immediately reached out to John and asked if he'd be willing to chat with Tyler, pilot to aspiring pilot. And without hesitation, John jumped in to help. Afterwards, Tyler was floored, saying, "He explained something to me I've been wrestling with for weeks in three minutes with just two circles." "John, I want to give you a huge salute for stepping up and making a real difference in this young man's life. You truly made his day and his future a little brighter."
Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. My name's Herb Bischoff. I'm from Palmer, uh, here. I was here to support your efforts to address the repair of the railroad's crossings, and I noticed that the action memorandum is under public hearings, which I assumed meant that public could testify rather than being under action memorandum. So, I wasn't real clear on the procedural part, so I'm here during audience participation. Um, one of the things I'd like to point out is that I greatly appreciate the fact that you all recognize the importance of the safety of our streets and, uh, for pedestrians and our vehicles, and that you're addressing this issue. I've, uh, pre- uh, given some information prior to the council regarding some correspondence and concerns I've had in the past. I've communicated with the Alaska Railroad, uh, Corporation and asked them regarding their role in the repair of, of, uh, of the tracks, and was assured that that discussion was being held at least annually with the City of Palmer, and in particular with the, uh, mayor and city manager. I couldn't find any information about that in the records on the website, so I'm not sure about all the details involved in your relationship with the railroad. Uh, but I am happy that you're concerned about the safety of the people here in the community and those who travel through. I think that, uh, removing the troublesome section of track is probably the best step, although, again, I'm not familiar with all the details. Every time I look into this, I find out new information that doesn't seem to be available, uh, to me as I look through other resources. But I have talked with several people in the community that are interested in and hope to see the railroad return, and that they're fearful that if a section of track is removed, that perhaps that dream might not be fulfilled. I'd like to point out that, in my opinion, I think that making that crossing safe by removing a small section of the track actually helps take a step toward the dream of possibly having the railroad back. I understand the tracks are not in compliance to current standards, and they would need to be replaced and repaired. That suggests that if you repair it now, you're going to save the city some money later on, uh, when you have to find a way to meet the compliance measures. The only other thing I can say is that, um, possibility of a train coming should be the last of your concerns. Uh, not that it isn't important. It's just that the important and the priority is the safety of the people who are in the community. And as you well know, that's been challenged by some incidents related to the tracks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work on the issue.
Uh, Hillary Schwatterer. Hopefully, I didn't do too bad.
Good evening. My name is Hillary Schwatter, and I'm a resident of the City of Palmer and a Palmer Police Department employee. I'm here to clarify several important points for the record. The statements made by the mayor and his ballot statement are false. The city attorney never provided us legal guidance, and her intention to read any statement was unknown to us. Her statement was not the catalyst that the mayor portrays it to be. That spark was ignited during the weeks leading up to that meeting when our department was gutted and our morale was crushed. This entire process, following Jelly's brief but significant reign over us, has been more stressful than the acute issues associated with his tenure. The backhanded and secretive approach to numerous decisions leave me often questioning why our elected leader would be so inclined to exploit his employees for a position that pays him so little annually. My coworkers and I were threatened with termination if we continued to express our concerns, speak to the council, or attend public meetings. Why would my job be at risk for speaking out when an elected official is operating beyond their legal boundaries? This behavior is the same as the mayor telling Jelly that employees were expressing concerns to him. This is not a lapse in judgment. This is a consistent pattern of breaching public trust. Public process is not a personal platform. It is a responsibility. Subverting this process to silence dissent is the definition of corruption. Instead of supporting his employees who diligently work daily to ensure the happiness and satisfaction of his constituents, the mayor would rather shield problems internally and prioritize political loyalties over ethical duty. This is not merely disappointing, but is disqualifying. Thank you.
Virginia Calvert?
My name is Virginia Calvert. I'm here today to clarify statements on the special ballot for the recall election of Mayor Carrington. Many of the statements made by Mayor, Mayor Carrington are false. The city attorney provided no directions to any employees regarding former manager Jelly's conduct and how to address it. The statements read by the city attorney came as a surprise to all of us who spoke out in October. Never once did the city attorney direct us to claim whistleblower status. The city attorney's statements did not trigger an emotional charging meeting. The employees of the City of Palmer planned to come forward with our concerns independently, and again, we did not know the city attorney had drafted or planned to read any statements. I don't think Mayor Carrington is qualified to write in an official ballot that our claims to be whistleblowers were questionable. I also find it insulting and belittling to the treatment we all suffered at the hands of former manager Jelly. Members of the council, we employees come into work daily to go forth and assist in providing to your constituents that they made the right choice in their elected officials. We work diligently through every course of our duty to make sure your citizens are happy and satisfied with their government at every level. The statements made by Mayor Carrington in the special ballot are untrue, accusatory, brazen, and cast aside the thousands of tens, if not hundreds of thousands of hours put in yearly by your employees to keep the city, city running smoothly and efficiently with a smile. The sole reason this city continues to function in the slightest is due to the four of the seven council members sitting before us today. The ethical bankruptcy of our principal leadership and the fact that it has gone relatively unnoticed for this long is astonishing. Thank you.
Uh, Whitney Daw?
Hi, I'm Whitney Daw. Uh, I'd just like to make it known that contrary to the special ballot statement for the recall of the mayor, I'm not aware of any city employee that was coached or directed to claim any status by the city attorney. I have concerns about the nature of how that statement was worded and allowed to be placed on the ballot, when there are several facts written in stone that weren't true and seem a bit misleading. I also wanted to say that I am appreciative and thankful for everybody supporting, um, the Police Department and Dispatch. Um, it's been a pretty interesting last six months, and our dispatch center is back fully staffed, plus some. Um, we have a few on calls. And, uh, yeah, I'm appreciative of every one of you. So, thank you.
Jackie, go forth?
Good evening. My name is Jackie Goforth. I'm a writer. I put plots together. I try and figure out what is going on and why. Why did Mr. Jelly have such power over three council members that he could almost blackmail them? Why? Was it the library? Was it the movement of the city council member offices? Or no, excuse me, the community development, um, offices from the airport? Is it the ownership of some land at the airport? I mean, what, why? Why, why do we want an investigation when he gets paid for an investigation? Every single thing that's happening. Why did three members keep continually try to have an investigation? And why, when I know darn well the petition format, when you fill it out, does not allow italicizing and bold, isn't a statement put in in there that is a completely false statement? Now, it does say that all of the council members voted yes on that agreement, but it fails to take into account the three hours of coercive and abusive activity that took place in order to force that acceptance of that agreement. And I stood, I sat in a, uh, count, in a, uh, courtroom when a domestic violence ma- uh, uh, a man who'd committed domestic violence had the witness statement read out to him. And I sat there and listened to it, and it was horrific, horrific. And then the judge- And then the judge gave him his opportunity to say something about it. And all he did was talk about me, me and poor me and I've done nothing and I've done nothing and I've done nothing. And you know what the judge said? If you have accusations against you, such as that police report of what happened during those three hours and you fail to address it, then it stands. Do you understand? There is nothing that says that that three hours of sexual abusive language didn't take place. And so we had three members on that council who actually kowtowed to our former manager and they still are. And I still am trying to figure out why. It doesn't seem to be the library, although that looks like insurance fraud and destruction of public property. It's something more. And if he could figure it out in order to blackmail people, I'm pretty sure I can find out what it is too. And it might happen to do with some insta-retirements? I don't know. Maybe it happens with the person who insta-retired was out there putting out campaign signs on City Time in order to get the railroad tracks removed? Is that legal? Isn't that like putting in what you want to happen, city, without doing a vote to the voters? I mean, don't you even ask for the public's opinion on this and send it out a petition? Was that done on City Time by city employees, like directors who are insta-retiring? I mean, there are so many questions going on here and that's not even taking into account that the mayor's statement is... Well, it's probably libel and defamation, but those are things that have to be proven in court and I'll let that take place. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Debbie Wetherhorn. I am a citizen of the city of Palmer. I've lived here since 1990. I'm here to understand these railroad tracks, okay? To me, the railroad tracks are historical. Does the city of Palmer not have a historical society? Why would we want to remove them? I'm all for fixing them, please, don't get me wrong. But can't we fix them without removing them? I just, 1935, the colonists established Palmer. How can we remove the railroad tracks? I don't get it. I mean, I have made many calls. I even talked to the railroad, okay? But I really appreciated this gentleman's comments earlier about the information that he found, but I just want to advocate that, yes, I want the crossings fixed, but I do not think that we should remove our railroad tracks. They're our history. So, and I must say, what an interesting meeting this has been. So I thank you very much and...
Wesley Arts, Palmer Bar. It's good that we're looking at fixing the railroad tracks. There's another intersection that needs the railroad tracks fixed also. A lot of people aren't, haven't been really paying attention and they don't know actually the railroad's policies. Perfect example, if the train came back through here and they actually decided to run it all the way up to Sutton, this building that we're in would be gone. That's railroad, that's their standard. They do not want anything in there right of way. The thing is, is I think the city should imminent demand it, then we can actually put some of these tracks and keep them here because they are a part of the history. So is this building. But the railroad, unless they're making money, they're not going to come back in here. And they've, the council has looked at the price of having the train come back in here. Who's going to pay for it? The city? Do we generate enough money to do that? The city doesn't generate a lot of money. Please think about this, but we do need, we need handicap access downtown to be brought up. There's a lot of things that we need to do to rejuvenate the downtown area and make it better for everything. Yes, this, the whole railroad tracks in the downtown area, that's part of the history. But we also have to look at the lawsuits that are caused by people hurting themselves on the railroad tracks. We need signs up there saying, "It's dangerous to play on the tracks." We also have to deal with the crossings. I'm just saying, we got to think about a lot of this stuff. And yeah, it's part of the history. My business is directly tied to the colonists of this community. So please try to think about it and try to follow the whole things and ask these hard questions of the railroad. The railroad will never come back in here. They have stated it before to us. So thank you.
Cashier Garrett.
Good evening, Mayor Carrington, council members, townspeople. My name is Cashier Garrett and I'm here tonight to express my gratitude to the mayor for considering me for the vacant seat. It is an honor to be considered for leadership. It is an even higher honor to be selected. And with that, I want to congratulate Councilman Erby for your willingness to step up at this time. Mayor Carrington, thank you for encouraging me to consider running in October. I think I shall and I look forward to getting to know people here who I do not know. I also want to offer gratitude to Clerk Shelley for her help in helping me to get my paperwork turned in while I was in Georgia visiting my mother for her 75th birthday. And I have correspondence for the mayor. It's a thank you note, which says much the same thing I've expressed. Thank you, everyone.
Is there anyone else for audience participation?
Hello, my name is Amanda Graham. I'm a resident in the city of Palmer. I just wanted to come up here and put in my two cents real quick before I gotta feed my kid. I want to echo what Wesley said about the railroad coming back through Palmer. It's not going to happen. It'll wipe out the majority of downtown. The right of way for the railroad is massive. We already know that we don't have the ability to really support a commuter rail out here. They've looked at it multiple times. We have the nice new railroad stop at the fairgrounds that they, I don't even think they used it last year for the rail. I think that there are a lot of other options where we can honor Palmer's railroad-centric past while also making everything safe downtown. I don't know how many times I've had coffee spilled in my car going over those tracks right there. I've seen kids just biff it hard in the park right there. It's a little rough. One thing I would like to suggest, especially with the library going in, is if we, if and when we pull those rails, we save them somewhere and maybe commission an artist to make something out of them, either at the library for the new building or over here, something everybody can look at, learn a little bit about the history of Palmer while maintaining its pedestrian-friendly downtown and not rattling everybody's feelings when they go over the two intersections that still have them. I also want to thank the mayor and the city clerk for all their work they did with the appointment for the new city council member. I know it was a lot of work to get it all out as soon as you could and it is appreciated. Thank you, guys.
Anyone else for audience participation?
Hello, my name is Alex Strawn. I'm a resident of the city of Palmer and tonight I'm representing myself. I was born and raised in the city of Palmer. I was a squirrel, then a panther, then a moose. And I, when I graduated high school, I went and fought forest fires for 10 years and I got to travel all over the world and all over the U.S. And one thing I learned is that this is as good a place as any to live, so I came back and raised a family here. And I absolutely love it. I love the mountains, I love the feel and character, I love the railroad tracks and I love the bells and the candles and the, during Christmas time and all the decorations. I did move to city of Palmer proper a couple of years ago and I am fortunate enough to live and work right in the city of Palmer and I ride my bicycle and I walk and I ride my one-wheel. I'm that guy on the one-wheel cruising around. The two crossings that we're talking about this evening are pretty treacherous. When you start riding around the city from that perspective, not in a vehicle, you start to notice things that you wouldn't otherwise notice. I've learned to hop curbs, but I prefer not to do it. It's kind of dangerous. The crossing at Evergreen is particularly treacherous for me because I have to swerve to the center of the road to get the spot where I can ride over it or I can go off into the dirt on the side. So I really fully support adding these little off-ramps from the sidewalks as well as fixing the crossing. We can maintain and preserve the history of the railroad tracks here. I think it's a wonderful thing. We should keep that in our little Central Park strip that we have, but the crossings are just absolutely treacherous. When you can ride over them and see rebar down there and it just jolts you as you cruise even in a car, it just needs to be fixed. So, thank you.
Anyone else for audience participation? Nope. It's a race.
Hold this? Yes. My name is Sharon Powder. I also live in the city of Palmer and I had a lot to say, but the last three speakers already said it. So I echo them completely. I've taken a group ride, group bike ride through Palmer and my friends wondered why we were going a certain way. And I said, "Because if we go over these crossings, you're going to die." So we went around and I'm very in support of fixing the crossings and probably pulling the tracks. And I really like the idea of using the tracks as some sort of a historical... You know, we have great, great artists in this community and I think they can do something great with that. So, thank you.
Anyone else for audience participation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike Malewski and I live in beautiful downtown Palmer on the other side of the tracks. So every day since our studio is on this side of the tracks, I come across. It might be walking, it might be driving, it might be on a bike. Earlier tonight, you had the students who spoke to you about going to Soroma. We were privileged 15 years ago to go to Soroma. And one of the things that was a takeaway, and we're going back this July and I look forward to seeing it, is that Soroma, once upon a time, had a railroad that brought a train into Soroma. And I checked with some people who had been there 30 years ago. Probably somewhere in the 1980s, that train stopped going to Soroma. So if you go to Soroma today, you'll find a station very similar to this one. You'll find a display of railroad car. You'll find some tracks, short length of tracks, but the rest of the tracks are gone. So I did ask, "Well, what happened to them?" Well, they were pulled up and sold. They brought a certain amount of money. I think, to me, that's what we're facing here. I'm familiar with a little bit. I've worked on railroad in the past and it doesn't take much. You can all do that. I'd invite you to walk the tracks between here and the Springer system and dodging the trees that have grown up and all the rest of it. Back when Mr. Erby was on the council, I was privileged to serve with him. At that time, we talked about this, the discussion about the railroad tracks came up. And at that time, the railroad had a number of meetings. I attended them. They looked and said, basically, if there were going to be any commuter traffic or railroads coming into the valley, it would be going to the hospital site, going on the line that runs up to Fairbanks. But there's no through line here. And if you've gone on the trail towards Sutton, you'll notice that most of that trail is gone because it's in the river. Once upon a time, there was a train that not only came here, but went all the way to Sutton. But coal, it was, it functioned. That's all gone. And so, as many of the speakers have said, it makes sense to memorialize the fact of the train and that can be done. But there are all kinds of things that could be done with this area here if you choose to. So I fully support, as I've said, I crossed that set of tracks, fully support the council's approval of the work that's proposed, which I think has been thoughtfully prepared and discussed. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for audience participation?
Hello, my name is Maggie Weisenhahn. I'm 19 years old and a Palmer High School alumni. I just wanted to say, I actually wasn't planning on talking tonight, but my father suggested it. So recently, there was a possible ending to the Japanese program at Palmer High and by the principal who's retiring this year, actually. And luckily enough, because of a change.org petition and the amount of support from the community, we were able to save the program. I just wanted to say that since you guys have showed us support of the Soroma program for many, 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 many years, I myself have actually gone and I spoke in front of you guys a few years ago. So I just wanted to say, if you could adopt a resolution to show support for the Japanese language program at Palmer High, that would be amazing. And I just want to say, I appreciate you all and thank you very much.
Is there anyone else for audience participation?
This is Richard Best, Palmer citizen. I'd like to welcome Ken Erby as my replacement on city council. Your years of experience and my service with you was enjoyable. You've always been one to ask hard questions and really think about things. Tonight, we've heard some testimony where we have had folks at work with the police department and others and talk about how some of the statements in the upcoming election were false statements. And as I read them, it was kind of, was echoing through my mind when we're talking about ethics and that the police departments, you know, are held to a higher standard. And I get that and I appreciate that. And the service that everybody does, the police department, the fire department, you know, those are folks that are putting their lives on the line for us. And with respect, we're all also human and we all also have mistakes. And I'd like to put on the record a copy of the Palmer Police Department's standard operating procedure when it comes to their body-worn cameras, okay? We've recently seen a posting on Facebook where there was, there's an excerpt out of a recording from Lieutenant La Croix, who was the acting police chief at the time, had activated his body camera and then was recording a conversation with him that the, at the time, manager Jelly and the mayor of Palmer. And in the police standard operating procedures, under prohibited body-worn camera recordings, number two, body-worn camera will not be intentionally activated to record conversations of the city of Palmer employees without their knowledge during routine, non-enforcement-related activities. That recording was not a police, it was a non-enforcement-related activity. So there was intention, for some reason, to activate that body-worn camera to try to catch a conversation for a reason. That is against the police standard operating procedures. They broke their own rules. Now, if we go to, under security, under E, of security of body-worn cameras, media, all digital media collected by body-worn cameras is considered a record of the Palmer Police Department. Access to such media will be limited to the same standards as any other departmental record. Accessing, copying, or releasing any recordings for other than official law enforcement purposes is strictly prohibited, except as required by law. Again, another standard of their own processes that they are failing to adhere to. And this is for political reasons and I would also... I'll catch you in the next three minutes.
I believe we hit 30 minutes. So we'll close this audience participation. We'll have another one later and we'll take a short break. a short break.
That'd be less conspicuous when they're children speaking.
I'm just, I'm surprised at the animosity from the police department. You probably knew something about it.
I'm annoyed that apparently nobody wrote my body camera story in October.
Well, he did. He must have bested it, or is it way out on the consumer?
Those to me, yeah. It's like, can you please, like, the lawsuits?
Cause we've got, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Uh-oh, you going somewhere, Ken? Are you going somewhere? Oh, okay. Let's call ourselves back to order. And next is public hearings. So, we have Resolution Number 25-016, a resolution of the Palmer City Council appointing precinct workers for the May 20th, 2025 special election. We will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this resolution can come forward. You have three minutes. Okay, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. What's the wishes of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Is there any discussion?
For the record, second.
Is there any discussion from the council? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
House Member Alcántara?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
House Member Irby?
Yes.
House Member Brager?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tutter?
Yes.
Yes.
Next is Action Memorandum Number 25-037, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into a contract with East Fork Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $294,957.37 for the Fireweed Ave. and Colony Way intersection improvements project. We will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this action memorandum can come forward and have three minutes.
Lee Hendrickson, resident of Palmer. I am in favor of fixing the Fireweed Crossing there. Having, we tend to avoid it when we drive now, just because it is so disruptive and making sure we don't damage our car. I have to say, I was driving on South Chugak Street down to drop some stuff off at a friend today, and I crossed, I crossed a crossing there that was cement around the rails, and I didn't even notice that I was crossing the tracks. So, it would be nice if that was the same there. And also, Mike reminded me that in Soroma, when we were there 15 years ago, I have pictures of those railroad track art things, the brick things. If anyone wants to see one possibility of how to memorialize the tracks. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Fireweed Crossing project?
As you know, I'm for, but please, hopefully this will lead to the other crossing getting fixed also. Maybe we can do this and learn where, for the next set of tracks. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the Fireweed Crossing? Okay, seeing no one else come forward, we'll close the public hearing. All right, what's the wishes of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Do we want some staff, okay, Mr. Manager, if you could give us a good summary here?
Okay, I'll invite Mr. Billifer up to speak to us. And while he's making our way up, just want to point out, the account that this is coming from, ending in 6302, has a balance of $688,808, which should be able to cover this, the $294,000 that's being budgeted for the project.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Jude Billifer, your Public Works Director, and I'll dovetail on to that account. There's also $72,000 that is ADA specific money. So, what I want folks to remember is that the primary focus of this project that was brought to the attention of the Public Works Department was the three non-ADA compliant sidewalk crossings, which directly impacted some of our most vulnerable folks. They are the three right there next to the Pioneer and Veterans Home. And the only way that we can fix these, we looked at this several different times from an engineering perspective, is you have to lower the grade of the road right there to ensure the ADA compliance with those three crossings. That's what we're doing. It is not ripping up tracks all across town. It will be a cut of the tracks on either side, a slope, and a lowering of the grade of that section of fireweed between, as we designate, that you see in your packet. And as I said, one of the primary focuses is fixing those three ADA crossings that are heavily used. Any questions or comments or concerns?
Councilmember Alcántara?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. More comments than anything, and thank you, Mr. Billifer, for your report. I appreciate it. And it's knowing that this is more than, a lot more than just removing tracks. I mean, my father worked for the Alaska Railroad from 1949 to 1952. I wish he was still around to give me some advice, but I'm sure he would say, you know, the time has come to remove these things that are hazardous to the public. I'm whistled for the tracks. I mean, many, many Palmer Pride picnics, I've taken my daughter, who was here earlier, and my older kids, who are in their twenties, and walked on the railroad tracks with them. And it's a great, fun thing to do on those, you know, lopsided tracks, and can you keep your balance, and all those great things. That's great to do when you're four years old and six years old. Not so great to do when you're in your seventies, eighties, and nineties and negotiating things out of the senior center. So, I think it's, you know, I'm whistled for tracks like everybody else. I think as several speakers have pointed out, there's ways to keep things in place here, and I'm sure that will be done. And I look forward to just a more safe environment on both of those crossings for our seniors, not just living at the Pioneer Home, but the ones that just want to enjoy downtown Palmer. They want to make, they want to go from the museum to Palmer Bar, or wherever they may want to get to. They want to be able to cross those tracks. So, I appreciate bringing this forward, and I just think the time is, the time is now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got a couple of stupid questions to clarify things. That's okay, Jude. So, one of my questions, is there, so it sounds like there's no possibility if we were to patch that, to have kind of, to make it ADA compliant for the crosswalks? I just wanted to confirm that.
That is correct.
Okay. And when we patched in the past, how long does that last normally, you know?
Two to three months.
Oh, two to three months. Okay. And about how much does it cost to patch it when we do patch it?
I believe the last patch cost us slightly under $5,000.
Okay.
I don't know the exact amount off the top of my head.
Okay. But it only lasts about three to, and it doesn't matter what time of year the patch is put on. I always, I guess...
A little longer in the summer.
Okay.
But most of the time, when it shows itself, is in the winter.
Yeah. That makes sense. And so, and I'm assuming, have we tried using things like, you know, like concrete that was mentioned? Have we tried using other materials for that?
There have been numerous different types of materials attempted at that specific crossing.
Okay. Yeah, I guess my consternation is, is, you know, I understand the need to have them fixed permanently for safety.
We did ask the railroad for an estimate to fix the crossing to railroad standards, which would be a full dig out and project, and I won't go in too much in depth. But I do have their cost estimate they gave us, and it was $537,000 to bring it to railroad standard just for that specific crossing. And that was only fixing the track portion because it's nonusable track right now.
Yeah.
Alaska Railroad cars cannot run on the gauge of track that is currently out there. It's the wrong poundage. And it was that amount of money for just right there.
Yeah, thank you. I was a little concerned about this process, so I did reach out to the 557 Restoration Company. I spoke with Pat over there, and he answered a lot of my questions with this, too. And it sounded like, you know, to, the ties definitely need to be fixed, because I think kind of the dream is, is that we leave the door open for their steam engine to be able to come into Palmer. I think that could be a huge draw. But it sounds like, you know, when I was asking about, in particular, about the intersection, it's kind of an unknown entity as far as that goes. But the rest of tracks, those ties need to be replaced, which is gonna cost, you know, kind of close, it was somewhere around $800,000-ish, if memory serves.
The estimate that I received from the Alaska Railroad, if they were to do the rails from the depot at the state fair, past our depot here was $3.7 million.
Yeah.
And that was three years ago.
Yeah. Yeah, and it sounds like they don't need it up to quite that standard, but it would still be, you know, a significant investment to get them up to where the...
Oh, I see. Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah. And I think that's kind of everyone's concern. So, one of the things I, because that's what I've heard from the community, is they just want to make sure we don't close that door. Because, I mean, I think if you look around, I mean, look at the, look at this beautiful scenery we have, and if you have a steam train coming in, I mean, forget about it. We're gonna get tons of visitors here. If we were to need to put the tracks back on, let's say, you know, eight years from now, or whenever, when the train's done and it's gone through its test runs and everything, is it relatively easy to put that back up to a standard where that particular train could run through Palmer?
It could. Your trade off will be you will lose the ADA compliant crossings.
Okay. So, there's really no way to have them ADA compliant and also have...
Not at that location. It is not.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for answering my questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Cooper.
Just for some edification of the folks that are here and maybe don't know this, South Palmer Station was built in, is dedicated in 2004. And the reason for that was, one, obviously the fairgrounds, but two, it was the last stop that the train from, the Alaska train was gonna stop at. They were not coming into Palmer. I think the last time we had a Christmas train was probably 2002-ish, 2003?
2008.
Oh, it was?
It was. And it had to have special governor exemption...
Right.
...to override the foreman.
Yeah. Yeah. And we've known that the train folks have said they're not, they're not coming in. And I'm with you as far as us doing an ADA compliant, which is probably the most important thing that we need to do. And we've ruined a number of equipment, city equipment on that road. And I would hate to guess how many city cars or personal cars have been damaged on that road as well. And we know that we've had cars slide into Jenskeys from that crossing. So, I am in favor of, you know, doing this project, making it ADA approved, and we know... So I am in favor of, you know, doing this project, making it ADA approved, and we know that, you know, if and when something ever has to happen, that we have the ability to come back and fix that. Thank you.
Councilmember Hudson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions. My first question is, for the sections of tracks that are pulled up, does the city pay any fees or costs to the Alaska Railroad or anybody for those sections that are pulled up?
No.
I have, I guess maybe this would be a question for the city manager then. I've gotten conflicting information from different department heads regarding that. So I would just like clarification from the city manager or the attorney if we are currently paying a two thousand dollar fine or fee a year, not a fine, but a fee a year to the Alaska Railroad for the certain sections, five hundred dollars a section that is already removed.
Mr. Manager.
We, we do pay a lease for, for the railroad that we, that we use, and I'll let Mr. Billifer expound on that.
We do pay, the city does, their permits to have our road crossing across the various train track areas throughout the city. So there are several places that are lumped into crossing permit with the Alaska Railroad, and the city does pay that every year. Now, as part of that permit, though, the city is authorized by that permit to do work to repair and adjust as they see fit for safety purposes. This has been brought to the Alaska Railroad's attention. I have the emails from their folks saying they are perfect, they are fine with us doing our project and fixing that crossing, because we pay to use that crossing. Hopefully that, that answered it.
Councilmember Hudson.
Yeah, so I just want to confirm that us doing, like, the city doing this project isn't going to make the city liable to pay them more money a year.
It is not.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess I can wait until everybody's done answering your questions, so you can sit down or whatever, if I don't.
Does any other council members have questions?
I don't have, I have comments, but I don't have a question, so.
Okay. Whoever's got, yeah.
We, Mr. Mayor, if we may, we were just saying that we don't have questions for Mr. Billifer, so we wanted to let him sit down and then, before we made our statements, is all we were saying, if everyone was done, that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Billifer.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Hudson.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So all I wanted to say was, I feel like I just wanted to clarify that there's this idea that, you know, people needed to come out to convince Councilwoman Hudson that we need to remove the tracks. And that's not the case. I do think that public safety is very important, and I think that the constituents having safe places to cross is also very important. What I also find very important is keeping your word. And there has been in the past resolutions that have been passed by the city and by the businesses together, the city council and the businesses, to support the railroad and the train coming into town. The resolution that was passed with the five-five-seven specifically was a resolution making a commitment to the Palmer spur area, so that was a separate resolution that was discussed and also signed by the city council. A man is only as good as his word, and that he keeps his word. And so to me, that was a really big deal, that the city council and the city of Palmer kept their word to these different entities. Obviously, removing these small portions of tracks isn't going to break the resolution or the commitment or the promise resolution that the city made to the five-five-seven, because that's at the spur. So I do think that's, that it is important for us to have safe crossings for people who need them, and for us to have ADA compliant sidewalks. I do also think it's important that we keep the idea open for the five-five-seven eventually to possibly come in, and so that's my only concern in lowering the road grade specifically also. I also wanted to say that I also do think it's important that somebody stands up for the other side of the situation with the railroad. So just like everybody is passionate, the majority of people here tonight are passionate about having those tracks removed for their reasons. There's other people that are really passionate about honoring the history of Palmer and the colonists and those kind of, you know, those kind of arguments. And I do think it's important that, no matter what's going on in the city, that we all, as a city, together as constituents and as a council, remember that at the end of the day, no matter which way anybody votes about this, we all, at the end of the day, use the downtown together still happily, even now, even though there's a part of the tracks that is bothersome. And we still can all gather downtown happily, and I just don't want us to forget that just because other people have different opinions as us, doesn't mean that they're not as valid as other people's. So I just wanted to also put that out there, because I think it's good that we all respect one another. Thank you.
Councilmember Graver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you specifically, Deputy Mayor Tudor, for your questions, that was very helpful. I know to myself as well as members of the audience and people listening in. I'm sure there's their questions that a lot of us have had, and I also thank my fellow council members for their comments, because I've walked into this meeting kind of on the other side of where Councilwoman Hudson was on, on this issue. And I was a little disappointed, I have to say. I, I love that we have those signs out there, I don't know who put them out there or when they put them out there. But I appreciate it because it obviously brought people in to be part of this meeting, and I really love that. I love to see people involved and making their voices heard. But the way it was worded to me, even though I'm on the side of, I love Palmer's history and I want to preserve that, but respectfully, I do think it is time to remove that portion of the tracks. The way it was worded on the sign made it seem like, you know, they were going to be fixed as in functional. And I think it probably deterred some people from coming, because they were like, oh, you know, the tracks are going to be fixed, they're going to work and stuff, and so they probably didn't show up to the meeting. And I don't know if that's true, but I was just disappointed in the way it was worded, and I wish it was worded a little differently, so that we might have other people here on the other side of the issue, because I was really looking forward to hearing that, not just one side. But yes, I just wanted to say I appreciate the long time and work that's gone into figuring out the best way to fix a crossing so that we're not deleting history or being disrespectful to, to that part of Palmer, but also keeping safety at the forefront, so that's all I have.
Any other council people want to comment? I'll just comment, I think it was Mr. Bishop had mentioned, I think it was two years ago, I went in with Manager Moosey and Brad Hanson, and I went into the railroad and sat down with an engineer and right-of-way people, and just tried to work through all kinds of questions we could come up with. And one of the questions I asked was, okay, if we're going to work on this intersection, is there some way that we can build this to a standard that would allow you to bring the tracks back, you know, later on, if you decide to come back? And they said, no. Number one, the, the regulations change, and number two, we have to know what's there, so we will, if we're coming back, we're going to rip it out and put in what, what we need, so. To me, that was kind of a simplification in my mind of, okay, this is something to, we should be able to go forward with this, and then, it's not to say we won't have different options in the future, but, you know, we need to do this for public safety. So I guess we're ready to vote. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Alcantra?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Councilmember Erby?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Next is Action Memorandum number twenty-five dash zero-three-six, authorizing the city manager to negotiate a new lease agreement with Northern Exposure Hangers on lease lot thirty-nine. What's the wishes of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion or questions from council? Councilmember Alcantra.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe a quick question for our city manager slash airport manager. So just a comment that we have a thirty-page contract on a forty-six hundred dollar a year project, and of course, me being the persnickety individual that I am, read the whole thing. So I'm wondering on page sixty-one, where it mentions the rent in section one point three, mentions the rent as derived by the square footage times nine cents per acre equals forty-six seventeen. I think that's, if you do the math, and I didn't use my phone to do this, but I think I can do it pretty well in my head, it's fifty-one thousand three hundred square feet times nine cents per square foot to get to the forty-six seventeen figure, I'm pretty sure. And, and so what I see here is that this company will, will build something, and it'll, it'll have to make certain checkpoints along the way and make sure that they're actually building what they say they're going to build in order to have this here for the amount of forty-six hundred and seventeen dollars a year for the next twenty-five years. Am I pretty much encapsulating it, Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, that is correct. I'll fix that typo, thank you.
Any other council? Councilmember Hudson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also just wanted to confirm that bringing this forward wasn't a conflict of interest, considering that you're, that our city manager works as the airport superintendent, and I just really want to make sure that that's not the case. And if it could possibly be the case, maybe that's a question for the city attorney, and if it could possibly be the case, it's not that I'm not happy to approve this, because I think it is great, I just want us to be careful. And if so, maybe we could add it to the next regular meeting agenda with the new city manager, when the city managers, the current city managers at the airport, I just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, that is a, a valid discussion point. That's why you haven't seen any, any airport legislation come in front of you in the last six months. Is because I've been, I'm, I'm, I'm not in a position to really do anything at the airport. The reason that I think this can move forward, and I'll defer to the city attorney for the, for an opinion, is because there is oversight on this, on the lease, from the city attorney as well as from, from finance. This is not, this is not something that's being done in a vacuum and I'm pushing through. This is something that I truly need a backstop, and I need somebody to help me through this and make sure that it is the, it is the right thing to do.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, oh.
Madam Attorney?
Just because we, the word conflict was mentioned, can I ask you a couple of questions real quick? Well, that way it's just clarified by anyone. Northern, are you financially gaining at all from Northern Exposure's LLC? I didn't think so. I have reviewed the contract as well. In terms of the contract allegation, or the contract clarifications, I believe that there was a concept of like a waiting list. Has this been the person, or there used to be, like first in time, has there been any, to your knowledge, is there anything that's competing for this one space? Yeah, I didn't think so. Those would be my only concerns in terms of conflicts, and I see none.
All right. Councilmember Hudson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make sure and check before the city voted on this, that's all, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council? Okay. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Graver? Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Erby?
Yes.
Councilmember Alcantra?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
All right. Next is Action Memorandum number twenty-five dash zero-three-eight, authorizing the city manager to negotiate an engine to a contract with Alaska Sure Seal, Inc. in an amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty-nine thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars and sixty cents for two thousand twenty-five crack sealing, roadway, street striping, and infrared pothole patching, change order number two, second year of a three-year contract. What's the wishes of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, is there any comments or questions from council? Mr. Manager, could we entertain Mr. Billifer?
Mr. Billifer, well, he's on his way up.
Go ahead.
I'll, I'll, we'll note that there are five different funds that these, that this is coming from. The first one, six zero seven nine, the infrared for twenty-six nine fifty. There is a budgeted line item there for twenty-seven thousand dollars. The next one down, the, for the airport, R and M for fourteen six hundred, fourteen thousand six hundred and change. The airport's budgeted fifteen thousand dollars for that amount. The crack sealing, line item sixty-sixty-eight for forty-two thousand seventy-five. There is, the road expenditure fund has, has forty-three thousand five hundred allocated for that. The road painting for a hundred twenty-two thousand dollars. The road expenditure fund has a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in the fund for that, so, and for the curb painting, twenty-three four ninety-nine. Capital Projects Fund oh eight has fifty-one thousand six hundred dollars allocated for that. So I just wanted, what I'm doing is letting you know that these line items are funded and this, this project is budgeted.
Okay. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor. So the line item, the airport repairs and maintenance, fourteen thousand plus, is that, just, I mean, we own the airport, but that, do we get reimbursement from FAA for their monies for their airport?
That comes out of the Airport Operations Fund. It comes at the, the Enterprise Fund pays for that portion.
And also, for all the crack sealing and the, all that good stuff that we're doing, painting, in the past, we had a, we mentioned this last year, we have a city employee that used to go paint their roads. We don't do that, I guess, anymore. And so do we go out and look at the roads and the, the condition of the roads and the cracks and the paint and all that kind of stuff, and make, you know, kind of verify that two hundred ninety-four thousand dollars is actually an accurate figure?
It is, and we do that. And what we do is per mile, and it is broken down, so in the case of, it's not just crack sealing. The vast majority is paint. And I'm sure you all notice, we started a program when I first got here three years ago to do a third of the city every year, so that the cost was not exorbitant, with the curb striping. That's the yellow or red. And then sidewalk, correction, crossings across the street, the white bars that you see, the vast majority of those disappear almost every winter. And our focus is, we focus on schools, we focus at the senior center, the tourist areas that traditionally get the most foot traffic. And then based on how much money we have allocated for that year, then we expand outwards. But it has been a very detailed description of how the linear feet that we can paint with what paint we have.
Follow-up?
Yes, continue.
On the, on the yellow curb painting, as you drive around town, you'll notice that there are discrepancies, if you want to call it that. Some intersections have way too much, some have way too little, some should not have any at all. Are we going to go and just paint them all, or are we going to go and look at those and, you know, make a determination that the, the footage that we're going to paint is going to be correct?
We do that. And if you, there is a specific piece, I believe it's over across from the Valley Hotel, where accidentally a section of, of curb was painted that shouldn't have been. We then came back over and turned it gray again, and we do that. Our goal, there's, unless there's a need for the paint to be there, we are not just indiscriminately putting paint down.
Councilmember Alcantra.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Billifer. Kind of, I was just going to comment on, like, I, I did notice that over half of the cost was for paint. And you pretty much hit on, it's a, it's a three-year plan, that if your, if your area's not painted now, it will be next year or the year after that. So if you added up all these lineal feet of things on page ninety-four, you would get to, that'd be about a third of what's in the entire city of Palmer.
That would require painting. So there are several sections of curb that do not require it, so this is. So, there are several sections of curb that do not require it, so this is, this is a tally of the areas that are required to be painted. Now, there are some areas that could have an increase in paint, but that is for what we are doing right now on this contract, because this is the second, um, option of this contract, we have not expanded beyond that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from counsel? Okay, thank you, Mr. Billford. Um, I guess it sounds like we're ready to vote? Okay. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Deputy Mayor Titor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Alcantara?
Yes.
Councilmember Erby?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson? Yes. Councilmember Ray. Yes.
Uh, next, we have authorizing the city manager to purchase a Werewolf Clarifier Brush Cleaning System for use in the clarifiers at the wastewater treatment plant in the amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand, nine-hundred-eighty dollars. What's the wishes of the counsel?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any questions or discussion from the counsel? Other than creative name on a werewolf. All right, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Braver?
Yes.
You have the mayor tutor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper? Yes.
Councilmember Alcantara?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray? Yes.
All right, next is Action Memorandum number twenty-five dash zero-four-zero, authorizing the mayor to execute the city manager's employment agreement with Colby Hickel Zirkle. What's the wishes of the counsel?
Moved to approve, second.
Okay. So, any questions or comments from counsel?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Cooper?
Um, I thought that we were going to, um, maybe see the offer letter before we saw the contract and, uh, make sure that they are actually kind of in agreement. Um, and then, the other, um, issue I have is section three, Palmer City residents, Palmer, it says, uh, Palmer, uh, the city manager shall reside in the city limits within one-hundred-and-eighty days. Um, our charter requires the, uh, city manager to be in the city limits on employment, so, um, I'm a little concerned that, that says, uh, that she'll be a resident of the city during his tenure in office, that doesn't, there's nowhere in, in the charter, nowhere in the, um, code that says that we authorize, that we have the ability to authorize, uh, a hundred-and-eighty days for the city manager to move into the city. And, uh, I'm wondering, uh, maybe legal can talk about, uh, you know, are we in violation of the charter when the charter is, quote, our bible?
Um, so, there was a couple of questions in there, um... Madam Attorney, do you have any comment? He was asking about the offer letter getting integrated into the contract, or...
Okay.
Okay. So, it did, um, as, as...
Want me to trust that, or?
Uh...
Oh, yeah.
Yes, Councilmember Cooper?
When we had our discussion, um, on the benefits for the city manager, that I thought that there was an agreement that we were going to give the city manager thirty days leave per year, uh, with an accumulation of sixty days. And as I looked through this, uh, under the same section, it says eleven-point-six-nine hour for pay period for employees with ten years or more continuous service. And so, we're given, uh, originally, I mean, we're gonna give thirty days upfront and then allow an accumulation of more than thirty days per year. Um, I thought we got rid of the hour thing and went strictly with the days, and, uh, so that's, that's a concern that I have, is that we're, we, one, we are authorizing, you know, thirty days upfront, and then, two, that we are, um, giving the, uh, manager who comes in on day one, uh, the same amount of, of accumulation of, uh, leave with someone who has ten years or more continuous service in our city. No question, just a comment?
Just a comment, okay. Deputy Mayor, did you want to comment?
Yeah, there, there was a little bit of back and forth, initially, we had, uh, the offer letter and then we had the, the contract. There's a little back and forth and some concern with the city as far as the ability, if we left it like that, uh, if, would the council be able to actually authorize those individual items? So, what we did is we combined the, uh, items in the offer letter into this agreement, which is why it's, uh, combined like that, this you know.
And, uh, I was just gonna comment, as, as far as I know, I think the hundred-and-eighty days to get into the city has been part of the manager's contract for, I think, a few, a few, uh, renditions, but I don't... Um, Madam Attorney, do you recall, was it in the, the previous one with, uh, Mr. Lucy?
Yes, I believe it, it was. Um, uh, so, the charter does say, uh, city manager shall be a resident of the city. Um, the hundred-and-eighty days, um, was in reference to department heads, um, i- in the code. Um, so, I think what is being described and offered, um, if I understand correctly from HR and their conversations, the intention is move in as quickly as possible, um, but the transition time in terms of, within knowledge you have to be a resident, there is the transition time, um, and the limited availability in Palmer. Um, there's also the point that, uh, it has been in, and I, I believe that that was something offered, um, during the negotiation pieces and has been in past, uh, city manager contracts as a transition time to move.
Okay. So, any, any other questions or comments from counsel? Councilmember Alcantara?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, some, um, important things that Councilmember Cooper brought to our attention, for sure. Um, you know, this, uh, I appreciate the work that went into this from our, uh, kinda temporary HR group, um, our team, uh, the mayor, the deputy mayor, and what, what had to occur to make this, um, contract, you know, come to life. I, I think, speaking for myself, um, we made a, uh, a very good hire, that definitely came at a cost. These, uh, some of these things that we entered into, uh, were a little, uh, a little beyond the hopes and thoughts of what, uh, what I initially thought we should've, we should've offered, but, um, but I, rather than being, uh, penny-wise and pound foolish, I'm gonna, uh, believe that, uh, Mrs. Zirkle, uh, Hickel will be, Hickel Zirkle will be a fantastic city manager, and, uh, and I do think, um, hopefully, time will play itself out and, uh, we'll get what we pay for and we'll have a fantastic city manager, so, thank you.
We ready to vote, then? Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Deputy Mayor Titor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper? Yes.
Councilmember Alcantara?
Yes.
Councilmember Erby?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes. Councilmember Braver? Yes.
Okay. There's no unfinished business, no new business, a record of items placed on the table? Okay. Audience participation? Uh, we will open up audience participation, you have three minutes, uh, since mo- many people already talked, I'll just add names as long as I can spell them.
Hi, uh, my name is Bob Shaw. Um, even though I don't come to the meetings, I, I participate by, uh, going through cabbage radio and also the video, so, I'm here almost every meeting, whether you know it or not. Um, one of the things that I wanna suggest and, and to, uh, maybe put into the record is, we don't have a good way of, uh, accessing the fairgrounds from downtown, but you do have some railroad tracks, we've been talking about the railroad tracks. So, I don't know what it would cost to be able to, uh, do something with those railroad tracks to make it easier, or a, a hiking path, a walking path between here and, uh, the fairgrounds. Every year, you see people walking along the highway, and that's a kind of a dangerous section for people to be walking on, but the, the railroad track, tracks actually offer a great, uh, location for people to be able to walk that is, uh, you know, off of the roads and would give a purpose, if you will, for the tracks that are there. So, just for food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for audience participation?
Um, to go off of what the gentleman was just before me was saying, well, I was looking at the pictures that Lee just had, then I was looking at the railroad tracks right out in front of here. Um, maybe there's a way that we can leave the tracks there and actually pave where the tracks are exposed on a bike path all the way to the fairgrounds, um, because if people can walk to the, to the fairgrounds, that'd be a good thing. And then, the tracks, we wouldn't be technically pulling them out, but we would have a bike path all the way down with the tracks, with, look at the pictures and then look at the tracks right outside the front door here. And I was like, huh, then it would be a safe area for people to walk, but yet, the tracks would still be there, um, and be kind of memorialized. So, I was just thinking about that, that's why I ran outside to look out, right outside the front door here also. Thank you.
Anyone else for audience participation?
Hello, Richard Best, Palmer citizen. Um, so, to finish my thought of the last three minutes where I was showing and indicating where, um, the police department isn't following their own written policies, and it brings to mind, um, that, that illegally obtained, or against, against policy obtained recording, uh, was then, uh, released out to individuals for political reasonings. And, um, it's just, it's kinda interesting that city council disapproved a contract which is against the charter, so, rules are kind of interesting. Um, I'm going to read into record a memo from the public works director, Jude Billford, from February twenty-eighth. Memorandum for record, discussion with councilmember Hudson and Ms. Goforth on February twenty-fifth council meeting, after February twenty-fifth council meeting. During the Palmer City Council meeting on February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, I gave, gave an overview of the city's water reports, where to find them, how often they are conducted, and details concerning the various levels of contaminants listed. This short overview was a response to a request from the mayor. Backstory, on nineteenth February, I received an email from the mayor indicating councilmember, the mayor would not identify what councilmember, told the rep, a representative in Juneau that the city's water supply had elevated levels of radium, since we could not get the exact reasons why the councilmember would make this statement, it was decided for me to brief the council as a whole during the next city council meeting on February twenty-fifth. After the twenty-fifth February meeting was adjourned, councilmember Hudson waved me over to chat with her. She then asked if she could, if we could speak in the mayor's office. Councilmember Hudson brought in Ms. Jackie Goforth as a witness to the conversation. Councilmember Hudson was upset that I called out councilmembers regarding the water quality statement made in Juneau. As I mentioned during my brief, it was not, it was not told to me those statements. Who, who made those statements? She then proceeded to tell me that I looked really bad coming up and doing that briefing. She said, "It reflected poorly on me that the mayor would put me in that position." It, I shared with her that the decision to brief them was mine and that I was very comfortable briefing. Councilmember Hudson then told me I needed to figure out which camp I was in. I told her I did not have a camp and that I worked for the good of Palmer. She also mentioned how ironic it was that the twenty-fifth February council meeting only had agenda items pertaining to public works. Her words were, "How funny how that happens at the same time as your briefing." Since the agenda was for the meeting established and locked in in February twenty-third of January, I found about the water quality comment on the nineteenth of February. I'm not sure what she's trying to imply by her statement. She did make several comments that the mayor was inept and couldn't answer questions about the city's water, so that's why she made the comment. Interesting. Anyway, a lot of small talk about the main gist was that I looked bad.
Is there anyone else for audience participation?
Oh, my, my, my. I'm Jackie Goforth. It's amazing what integrity and honor actually are exhibited by people. I was asked to step into the mayor's office for a conversation. I don't believe much of that took place, but I was not paying much attention to what was taking place, because I was there, because councilwoman Hudson had, was leery of having a male and a her in a office without someone else there, because of something that had happened in a council meeting with an ex-manager. That's why I was there. I was not involved with anyone, one, anything that was happening, my mind was pretty much not even listening. But I don't recall any of those words being spoken, which shows that she actually had a little bit of insight into why a witness would be necessary. Very odd. And I also would like to mention that, if you feel threatened as a police officer and you have a webcam or a camera on you, I believe that there's something in human nature that says you should be able to film it. Otherwise, people can say any statement they want to. And, and I understand that there's laws, but the video is already out. There's also laws against naming names on a recall. I'm sure they're in there, too, it's called defamation and slander, which are very difficult to prove. Things are already out there, people. Honor and integrity matter, and it's very interesting to find out where you can find it and where you can't. I try to be good at my word, because you never know when you're gonna be filmed, or you'll never know. And I kinda wish now that I had had my camera going during that meeting, but I don't do that, 'cause if I, if I say I'm gonna record you, I record you, if I don't, I don't. I, I'm kinda floored, from the same, you know, from the same person who had a city credit card, and I understand would go to city functions, or to functions, and, and instead of attending the function, he'd be out drinking. Now, I've heard this, but is it true? I don't know, but come on, come on. Let's, let's get beyond personal attacks and address the city's issues, can we, please? We have to continually go after people? I mean, what happened with this impartiality? I heard an oath getting taken today about impartiality. "I take an oath that I will be impartial." That's in the oath. Impartial is not putting a bold statement on a ballot. Impartial is not saying that the people who signed it don't exist, or you can't locate them when you can. Uh, 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 there's so much, and it just keeps, I think there's nothing, and then somebody says something, and yes, I was at that meeting, and I don't recall any of those words taking place. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for audience participation?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Chief Dwayne Shelton, Department of Police Department. I've got pretty thick skin, and if it was just me that were hearing these words regarding my department, I'd probably sit there in silence. But I've got several members of my employees that are here with me today and others that are listening, um, through mic services, so I feel it's important that I address a couple things. The first is, our body-worn camera standard operating procedure is a little bit different than policy, it is a procedure nonetheless, and specifically, it says prohibited body-worn camera recordings. Under subsection two, it says, "The body-worn camera, BWSC, will not be intentionally activated to record conversations of City of Palmer employees without their knowledge during," and I believe words are very important, "during routine, comma, non-enforcement-related activities." I had conversations with Commander La Croix far after that incident, when he recorded our former- I had conversations with Commander La Croix far after that incident when he recorded our former city manager. I'm here to tell you that, that, that night and what he walked into was far from routine. Take it as, take it for what you will. As far as the release of those, of that recording, those were done in accordance with City of Palmer's record release policy and the department's record release policy. It was also reviewed and approved through council to make sure that we were following it and administering it accurately. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for audience participation? Okay, well, close, audience participation. Next is council member comments. Mr. Erby, can we start with you? Oh, you need a mic.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to, to come back and represent the city. You know, the, the more things change, the, the more they're the same. I, I, I wanted to say that, that we supported the Sister City program and it was always a highlight and a pleasure to be able to do so. There was conversations when I was on the council last time to abolish that and I'm glad that we kept that. Little background in history, I've lived here in Palmer for fifty years. As was mentioned before, I was on the council for twelve years. That was ten years ago. And, you know, I had good teachers. The, like I said, things change, but they stay the same. Mr. Cooper was the mayor at the time. And Steve was, I'm, I'm sorry, the mayor was a, was a councilman. Sat next to me, in fact. But, but we also had Jack Snodgrass and Mike Gaddy. They were the city attorneys. And we had Tom Healy and Bill Allen. They were the city managers. These people were ultimate professionals and they set a very high bar. And, and, you know, I kind of expect nothing less from our new city manager and, and our, our current attorney. When I was on the council, like I said, we kept the Sister City going. We, we built the ice rink. We, we built the ballparks that shared, the soccer fields out by the middle school. We built the skateboard park. And we came up with the slogan, Palmer, Alaska at its best. We put it on the sign at, to greet anybody that comes into our town. And we built the, the public restroom down here for the tourists and anybody that's downtown. We upgraded the airport. We helped design the Bogart extension so that they got our input and that they did it right the first time and we didn't have to, to suffer and, and have to do major corrections later on. We paid off the golf course and we paved almost every road in Palmer. You know, like I said, fifty years ago, there was two paved streets in this town. We replaced all the rotting steel water main pipes throughout the city. They were, we were losing so much drinking water because the pipes were, like I said, were just rotten. And we, and we did all kinds of dozens of other projects. And, you know, I'm, I'm not tooting my horn because I didn't do any of those things. We did it as a council. We did it as a team. We did it for the city and we did it for the people that live here. So I'm here, I'm, I'm not a Republican, I'm not a Democrat, I'm not a liberal, I'm not a conservative. I'm here as a citizen of Palmer. I'm here for the, the, the best thing for, for Palmer. Palmer's a small town, it doesn't have room for that kind of divisiveness. We used to joke, or at least I did when I was on the council, that, that our neighbors to the north, they were so dysfunctional that they, they called the cops on each other. But we didn't do that here in Palmer. We didn't make the news or when we did, it was because the mayor said things like, we couldn't buy underwear in Palmer. And, and we fixed that. So, but, but, you know, now it's disturbing that we are in the news and it's about dysfunction, firings and recalls. Palmer's too small for that kind of divisiveness. I learned with my previous experience, we can and we will disagree with each other, but that's why there's seven of us. So I also learned that we can work through these disagreements and come up with solutions and results that are best for the city and the citizens. And that's hopefully why I'm here. So I'm looking forward at getting the library open again and, you know, other projects, like maybe we can finally get Cobb Street paved. But yeah, that, that's why I'm here and that's who I am and I thank you for the, the opportunity.
Thank you. Councilmember Graver?
I don't know if this is dying, so hopefully it'll last. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say the best part of the night was the Saroma delegation. I love it when they come and I get so nervous for them, but they do great every time and it just makes me smile. My teeth got dry, so I wanted to welcome Councilmember Erby. I look forward to working with you and having you on the council. And I'm not sure if I'll be here for the special meeting next Tuesday. I'll have to double check that just so everyone's aware. And the last thing was, let me pull this up so I say everything I wanted to. I've been talking with, oh no. Oh, there it is, okay. I've been talking with some business owners and some constituents as well as our city attorney and the police chief along the lines that summer is hopefully approaching and the weather's gonna get warmer. And with it, usually there's an increase in vagrancy as there has been in the past. Given the Supreme Court's decision last year on Grants Pass versus Johnson in which it held that cities may enforce laws regulating camping on public property, I would like to ask for council support to direct the city attorney to work together with the police chief and whoever else she deemed appropriate to draft an ordinance limiting camping to designated campgrounds or on private property with the permission of the property owners.
I would support that.
And I don't believe, do we need to vote on that or no? No? No, okay. And that is all I have for tonight.
Councilmember Hudson?
I just wanted to also welcome our new council member. I'm excited to work with you and hear your ideas since you have gone through a lot of community development when you were on the council. And those are things that I brought forward and so I'm really excited to work with you on your ideas about that, somebody that has experience with that. And that's hopefully willing to share that with everybody so we can come to some agreement about the things that need to get taken care of in the city. I also just wanted to thank everybody for coming out tonight and I'm excited to see the progress with the different things that we voted on tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Alcantara?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to say I really enjoy the train depot setting. Some parts that, some bugs to be worked out, but I'm sure it's probably a pain for Mr. Molesky and company. But I, I, I think it's a good trend to have occasional meetings here as much as we possibly can. I want to send out my congratulations to the folks in the fire department for their promotions. It's always nice to see those things in, in here. Of course, I thought the Saroma participants were wonderful, including my daughter. So I appreciate the, the city helping with that. And there I know she's super excited and they're actually gone for twenty days. It's quite, it is quite the trip. So it was nice to see them all here and, and, and have them all speak to us. I did think there was great audience participation tonight. Certainly appreciate everybody who came out and kind of had their, said their two cents worth. And that's always great to see. That's one of my favorite part of, of our packet every time. Welcome Ken Erby to the council. Good to have you back, council again, and look forward to the work you'll be doing here for the next several months. And I will not be here for a special meeting on the twenty ninth. And in fairness to our city manager, had I even known before today, I would not have been able to change my plans. So I will be out of town on that day on the twenty ninth, but I'll certainly be here for our next regularly scheduled council meeting in May. So I hope everybody enjoys some good weather and I'll, I'll be gone about five days, but that Tuesday happens to be one of them. So thank you very much for the time.
Alternate Deputy Mayor Cooper?
Thanks. Ken, welcome. Nice to be back on the council with you after all these years. The Saroma delegation kids blow me away. You have sixth graders that are fluent. You know, they might, they were a little nervous up there, but it's like, oh my gosh, you know. You know, I try to understand a little bit what they're saying, but, you know, I'm just absolutely amazed. And I know they're going to do just a wonderful job over there. Wes, twenty years ago, we talked about, we did the, the bike path here. We talked about extending that out to the fairgrounds and it was, it was along the tracks. And I hope maybe we can continue and do that again. And then on a different note, Palmer Community Foundation, of which I am a board member of, we had nineteen applicants during our grant cycle. They're all nonprofit organizations in and around the City of Palmer. And we, we gave out twenty thousand dollars to the, to about six of the nonprofits around here. So that was a, a good thing and the Palmer Community Foundation basically gets most of their money from donations from the, the citizens and we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Erby, I should, I should say, welcome back. Let's look forward to working with you. It's gonna be tremendous. Also, thank you for the hiring committee. Thank you for Councilwoman Graver and, and the mayor for all of us working to make this happen. Looking forward to a new city manager and, and I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to our new city manager, Mr. D'Minti, he did a tremendous job. And it's things like, you know, I got to go to a Small Business Development Center, had a meeting to discuss asphalt, they invited the City of Palmer there. And I was able to, you know, email Mr. D'Minti and he was able to get right back to me with the plans the city has and they could share tremendous things. Also, I gotta give a kudos to Lieutenant Eleanor Johnson with the Palmer Fire and Rescue. We have a great crew and she went to the Palmer Alliance Club and gave a really great presentation about fire safety and some of the preventive measures that our fire department does. She did a very good job. Also, wanted to give kudos to staff at Community Development, working with the Palmer Rotary Club for the redoing some of the park benches that have the, the roofs on them out there. And they just went above and beyond. Brad and Alish did a tremendous job working beyond that and they're very accommodating and helpful. And also, I got to go to a groundbreaking ceremony for the new visitor center that's gonna be coming in, kind of across from the Fox Run RV Park. This is gonna be a really big thing for our town when that opens up. So one of the things is because it's the, you know, we got that new four lane highway being built right there, it's gonna help draw tour buses into Palmer, I believe. And this is gonna be a really great thing for our economy. And I just have to say thank you to the Matsu Borough. They did a tremendous job supporting this for many years and the team over at the Matsu CVB, they've all worked really hard to make this happen. And also, I was able to represent the City of Palmer at the chamber meeting at their last meeting to give them an update on what's going with the city. That was really well received and I'm very grateful to be able to represent the city there as well. Thank you.
And I too want to welcome Ken Erby to the council. Welcome back, I guess. And I also want to really thank John D'Minti for being the interim manager and doing an excellent job in a difficult situation, so. And we're adjourned at eight forty-four.